Meeting to order. Please rise for the moment of silence. I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence for, yesterday was the anniversary of the Challenger Disaster, which would have brought our first teacher into space, and just a moment of silence for that. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. Fire evacuation, we have two exits. We have the one to the rear of the chambers, out to the parking lot, or to my left, your right, and left down the stairs to the rear parking lot. Can we roll call, please?
Mr. Renier?
Here.
Mrs. DePoe?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
I'm calling him now.
I'll come back to him. Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc? Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder? Chairman Cruzel?
Here. All right, ready? Stay here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Say it again.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Okay. We made a rule, anybody with a temperature 99 and over, don't come here, so that's why he's on the phone. Thank you for the roll calls, so board guests, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to preface all our guests this evening with what I shared with them earlier, is, given the fact that it's probably turning into a winter storm out there, I'm gonna ask everybody for their own safety to expedite their presentations, if you can keep your questions to a minimum, because I don't want these poor people on the road in the middle of a snowstorm on our account.
Fair enough.
At this point, I'd like to welcome our JFK debate team members, and our coordinator. Ms. Serato is here, I don't know what her official title is, and I'm gonna allow you to do that. Coach, that was the word I was looking for, sorry.
No, it's coach.
I'm sorry, I have weather on my mind, so I get an excuse today.
Being the superintendent, I imagine you do.
So either we sit at the table with the mic on, or there's a handheld mic there, whichever you wish.
Ladies, it's up to you, you're the team.
You gotta have a microphone, because it's television, we gotta have it on, we gotta have a microphone.
It's the light on, the light is on.
Okay, so just pull it up closer to you, so they can hear you.
Oh my gosh. Hi, hello, and thank you so much for having the JFK debate team. Our team members include Hannah Ryan, Kyrie Post, Andrew Goddard, Sophia Carrier, Rebecca Bemis, and Anna Bemis. Rebecca and Anna will tell you a little bit more about our debate team.
Hi, I am Rebecca Bemis, and I'm in sixth grade at JFK Middle School. I have learned so much from debate team this year. In fifth grade at Eli Whitney, we did a small unit on debating, but I learned that middle school debate is, was a whole new level. This year, we participated in one scrimmage and one debate. The question for the scrimmage was, should esports be allowed in the Olympics? And the question for the debate was, should incarcerated felons be allowed to vote? To prepare for both debates, we had to do a lot of research, not only for one side, but for both. We also had to learn the order of the arguments. There are multiple rounds, in each round, we were assigned pro or con. Then we would take turns, pro, con, pro, con, and con, pro. The rebuttal is the last person who speaks and refutes what the other team has said. I learned new terms, too. For example, if the other side would like to ask a question, that is called a POI. If we think the other team's rebuttal speaker is making a new point, we can stand and say point of origin. I have learned so much from debate team this year. I am very grateful to Ms. Serato for all the time she put into running it, and Mr. Rutledge and Ms. Gaskell for their help and support.
Hi, I'm Anna Bemis, and I'm an eighth grader at JFK Middle School. Our school's debate league is the Connecticut Middle School Debate League. A ton of middle schools in Connecticut come and compete, and have competed for years in these competitions, and I am so glad I was able to experience it and have Enfield take part in it. This debate experience has gone on to help me with knowing how to put together a strong, well-rounded argument, and how to order my evidence correctly. Doing debate has also helped me with confidence in public speaking, and being able to think quickly on my feet. Research was also a huge part of this process, and debate team has helped me learn how to research and note-take correctly, and also how to form a debate speech out of these notes. This experience has left me with many new skills that will help me in the future. Debate team has helped everyone in so many ways, and I hope we can continue debate in Enfield at both the high school and middle school levels, and continue to build on this amazing experience. This first debate club could not have been possible without our debate teacher, Mrs. Serato, or Mr. Rutledge and Mrs. Gaskell. They have contributed so much of their time and energy into this club. This debate experience would not have been successful if it weren't for their amazing generosity and support, and the support from the Board of Education. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Rutledge, you wanna start?
Sure, Walter, so, once again, I'm sorry I couldn't be there today, but, you know, I just wanna say how proud I am of every one of you, you know, going to those two tournaments and putting yourselves out there. I think you all did a fantastic job. Gavin Janis, you know, thank you very much for your support throughout this, you know, throughout this year. I think it was a great decision to, you know, move this to the middle school, and, you know, the six students that we, you know, had involved, you know, they worked hard, and, you know, they represented JFK Middle School very well at the, you know, two tournaments. So I just wanna say, keep up the great work, and, you know, hopefully, we can continue to work and move this forward next year.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Anyone else? Mr. Renier?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Rutledge strongly wanted to be here this evening, and we had to force him back not to be here. It was touch and go there for a minute, but if he could be here, he would. He's very proud of you guys, and every chance he can, he talks about the debate team, and how great you guys are doing. And it's great to hear from you all as well, how great the team is, what you've learned from it, the takeaways from it, not just participating, but learning from it as well, I think is the most important thing. And because of the advisors and the coaches that you guys have, it sounds like you're on track to do some big things next year.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. Mr. Neville?
I think all of us are proud of you, coming before us like this. You're so articulate, I'm just sitting here saying, I wasn't like that in sixth or seventh or eighth grade. And we had these things, and we had debate in high school, but actually, just junior and senior, and I know it helped me out an awful lot. And it sounds like it's helping you guys out, too. So, so, so proud to have you guys come before us and take this on, and we'll be watching you in the future. Hopefully, we can come to one of your debates. Take care.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Mr. Rutledge, for helping with getting this started, this great addition. Thank you also for working with them. Mr. Neville's debate was, which chisel to use on the tablet? Don't want to throw that out there. But thank you again, Mr. Rutledge, thank you again, thank you, girls, and go home before the snow starts falling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we also welcome Michelle Milton, our chief academic officer, Dr. Carrie Wiley, our district's team coordinator, and Jay La Mesa, our K-12 math coordinator. Our academic team is gonna present the board with an update on our district academic performance, as well as the much anticipated, newly implemented District-wide Math Vision, no pressure J. So at this point, please welcome Michelle, Carrie, and Jay to tonight's meeting. And same rules apply, I like to get them on the road before the snow comes down, so nothing personal, but I feel guilty if they're trapped in a snowstorm somewhere.
Am I good? Yeah, okay.
Yes, you are.
While Carrie pulls it up, I'm just gonna let you know that I am gonna, I have consolidated my presentation, but Mr. Dreszek is actually gonna send you the entire presentation that I gave to the Board of Ed Subcommittee earlier this year. So, any other questions that you have may be answered with looking at those slides as well. What I'm gonna show you tonight is, I'm just gonna kind of not talk a lot about the numbers, I'm gonna put them up on the screen, but I wanna talk more about the action plans and things like that. So, the, all the numbers you're gonna see are comparison trends for the four years of Smarter Balance and the three years of SAT with Enfield and the state. And the percentages that are there, it means the percentages of students that achieved a three or four on those assessments, okay? So the first slide is about the Smarter Balance, ELA grades three through eight, and the way they, they kind of do this, when they present it out to the public, is they combine all the grades together. So, yellow is Enfield, and blue is the state, and we, except for a brief little blip of 2015-16, we've kind of been pretty stagnant, pretty stagnant, pretty steady where we are with the ELA. You can go. Math, same thing, we're kind of in the same trend, we're not making as much growth as we would want, which is why I'm gonna kind of quickly go through this, so we can get to what we're doing with Jay. The math you're gonna hear a lot is, we need more growth in math. I broke it down from three through five, and again, except for a little jump in 2015-16, we pretty much stayed around the same level for the four years. So, we're kind of staying, the state is kind of staying the same in their level as well. We have an action plan that we put in place last year for ELA, so I'll talk about that as well, to see, we're trying to jump those scores as well. Math, three through five, we're kind of, again, we're not seeing the growth that we want. We had two years where we went up, 15-16 and 16-17, we took a dip last year. So thus, all the vision and plan that we have with Jay. ELA, we kind of stayed right around the high, high 40s, we were low 50s one year, but we were not dipping dipping, but we're not making the growth that we wanna make. Math, same thing, we had a jump the first year, and we've made slightly decline the past couple. You will notice, though, that we're, you know, our math scores are lower than our ELA scores, so is the state. It is a trend throughout the entire state, that math is, is the lower of the two. It's with the Common Core standards, that was where the rigor kind of really got raised, and things changed a bit. So, people are still kind of catching up to that trend. Just compared to last year, we had a slight growth, .4%, we really can't call that, you know, growth, we kind of stayed about the same with our ELA scores. The state and many other districts, though, did make more gains than we did. We dropped 2% in math, not as many districts made gains in math. The state made a slight gain, I think they were up like, one point, like one point something, not a huge growth, but they did make some growth. I'm gonna move into SAT, but before I went into SAT, I go in, I wanna just let you know what the cut scores are, because you're gonna see a slide that says average score. So, and according to the state, if you get a 480 or above, you have met the benchmark for ELA. If you get a 530 or above, you have met the benchmark for math. There's a huge discrepancy between those two, there's, there's quite the gap, and when you see the average scores and the percentages of threes and aboves, you're gonna, that, that number really does come into play. So SAT's been in place for three years, mandatory as the state assessment. We've been above the state average for the past two years in ELA. We're, you know, those are really, those are really good scores. Math, we have been below the state average, we made a nice jump last year, two years ago, rather, but last year, we dipped down. The thing to remember about SAT, too, though, is, is that it's grade 11, so whereas 38 is kind of all combined together, and some of those kids are tested multiple years, and they're, they're in there, this is one shot, it's, it's different kids every single year. So we are comparing scores, but it's not the same kids. The average scores for SAT, we are, remember, 480 is the benchmark, so our ELA scores have been above the benchmark all three years, and we are closing the gap with where the state is with their average score. Now, math, it's 530, we've been below the benchmark all three years, so has the state, so have most districts. It's something that everybody's really trying to close, it really is a huge jump, those, that, you know, that's a good number of points. I kind of already talked about this, the, you know, so I'm not gonna repeat that to you. In the, in the slides that Mr. Dreszek's going to give you, you're going to have every single AP course, their scores last year, compared to the state, the US, so there's gonna be three comparisons, but there was a lot of slides to go through. I would just wanna show you this growth chart, though, that just came out, so it compares us from 2015 to 2018, and I think it's pretty impressive. We had 202 exams given in Enfield in 200, in 2015. We went up to 411 in 2018, which is 103% growth. But the other numbers got better as well, which I think is really important to talk about. So we had, we went from 128 testers to 237 testers, which is a nice percentage of growth, too. But the number that really gets me is, the number of exam scores that are three or above. We had 100% growth, going from 112 to 224, which I think is a really nice testament to the fact that we really, you know, the kids are getting a lot of their AP tests, their AP classes, rather. And the number of courses offered in 2015 was 15, in 2018, it was 17, and this year, if you think that that's not the number, it's not. This year, it's 19, because we added the AP comparative government and the AP US government last year, so we went up two. So, we'll be, there'll be 19 courses this year. The action plan for ELA that we put in place last year is, I'm sure you all know, we went to reading workshop, K-5, we bought the Teachers College units, we brought professional development in, we had Teachers College people come in and train our teachers, they're still in district this year. We also went with a workshop-like model structure in a 6'8" as well, with professional development there, too. And we also revised some units in our high school courses, to include a hybrid unit, which was a whole-class novel, and book club as well, so there's some choice, and, and kids are able to kind of level a little bit. And that was such a huge hit, that we are writing more units this summer. The kids, the teachers and the kids love it, so that really is going over well, so we're gonna be making more changes there, too. And I'm not gonna really talk about the action plan for math, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Wiley, who, she and Mr. La Mesa will take you through that.
Okay, so to increase the mathematical achievement for all of our Enfield Public School students, I have to tell you that one of the biggest steps that we could take was to show support for a K-12 mathematics coordinator. In education, mathematical teaching and learning is usually grouped into two different categories, elementary math and secondary math, but when you look at it through a student's lens, starting in kindergarten through their graduation, they're not really different, it's all mathematics. So, one of the biggest challenges in mathematics education is to make sure that a student's experience is not only consistent and coherent from one grade level to the next, but that it's those two things from kindergarten through their graduation. And having a K-12 math coordinator affords us that opportunity. In a second, I get to introduce Jay, and he's gonna share the district-wide math vision with you, but since the fall, he's been able to share it with all K-5 teachers, all 612 math teachers, our principals, our district administration, as well as our Board of Education Curriculum Subcommittee members, without putting too much pressure, just like Mr. Dreszek already did, on his presentation, I have to share that his, the feedback that we've gotten so far, as well of the work, as the, as well as the work that started across the district, has been overwhelmingly productive and positive so far. We're also gonna be having some family nights coming up, the first of which is gonna be February 13th at Barnard, it will give us our, our first start for our K-2 families to come out and see the ideas that are gonna be supported here tonight, and we'll also be able to give some opportunities to how they can support their students at home as well. So with that said, I'm happy to introduce Jay La Mesa, our K-12 mathematics coordinator.
Wow, thank you. So, when I accepted the position as mathematics coordinator, I wanted to kind of envision what it might look like, K-12, in any classroom that we go in, and problem solving was, was the focus that immediately came to mind. So, when we walk into a classroom, the ideal situation is, we see teachers developing new mathematics from students' prior knowledge in a problem-based environment. That's quite a shift from what a lot of classrooms look like now, but our teachers are really working on that, and they're doing a great job. With our, on our student's side, we wanna build perseverance, so that students, so that they use those, those skills that they already have, the prior knowledge, to, to bring those new concepts to light, to build new concepts from old knowledge. So there's two, two steps that we're taking forward right now, this year, is, we're building a framework for what lessons will look like, and then we're coming up with a common, common strategy and common language for problem-solving, K through 12. The first thing, the, the framework, I guess we can talk about the lesson more, in the framework, we're using Dan Fickell's Five Principles to Invite Mathematical Thinking in the Classroom. And the first thing is starting with a question, and that's a little bit ambiguous, but the way I've been discussing with teachers, starting with a question is just, it can be anything that's not a definition, or a model that they repeat 50 times. So, it's a task, it's a question, it's a picture that they have to evaluate and discuss, can be a lot of things, and we'll talk about an example of this in just a minute. Then, the next thing is time to struggle. So, students need to be able to wrestle with ideas, and time to internalize, and then come up with questions or statements on their own. Sometimes it's difficult for teachers to sit there and watch, they don't want students to struggle, but that struggle is very important for any real learning to take place. The third thing is not being the answer key. I know as a teacher myself, students want to know if they're right, so they'll come up with something and say, oh, is this right? And then you kind of, you have to dial it back a little bit, and say, well, why do you think it's right? Maybe ask a friend, discuss your solution, and it could be very wrong, but it's very, it's important to investigate whether it's wrong, or it's right, and why it's wrong, or why it's right. And that brings me to the fourth point, and that's encouraging ideas. A student could ask a question, or make a statement, and that could be wrong, but we don't want to just dismiss it right away, we wanna investigate that, that wrong idea, and prove it to be correct or incorrect, and then congratulate that student on, on their attempt. The last thing is just time to play, especially at the elementary level, just playing games. We've been to some conferences this year, and we saw some games that students were playing in other classes, or in, in the presenters' classes, and just, it was awesome, just the flexibility and the thinking, and when students get competitive, they, they really internalize the learning. All right, so, this is an example of a question. It doesn't look like a question, but there is a question there, it's just, is, there's no words. So, the question that comes to mind to me is, what's going on with the colors, is there a relationship between the colors and the numbers, and then we look for some sort of patterns. And then, the teacher just kind of sits back and lets them, lets the students go at it. This is, this is an example of a fourth-grade lesson, so some students might say, well, if you look at the blues, they're all, they all have five in them, even numbers are orange, and then they start working on this, and eventually, we get to the idea that, if we look at the number six, well, six has green and orange, well, green is three, and orange is two, two times three is six, and then we can start to look at other numbers, see if that hypothesis that the colors are, they, they represent the numbers that are multiples, right? Really, what this lesson is getting at is prime factorization, the students do not know the term prime factorization, but they can understand the concept without knowing the term. So, we can, a teacher can build the concept of prime factorization, and then they can ask an extent, an extension question. So, the numbers go to 1 to 60, well, what colors would we need, and how many of those colors would we need to get to 100? That might be an extension question. So once we get there, then the idea of prime factorization, the term, and the textbook definition can be brought, so that the students can match their concept understanding with the actual mathematics definition in the textbook. So for me, that's much more enriching to the students, much deeper, and will be, will foster long-term knowledge, a lot better than a teacher starting with the definition, listing off some prime numbers, and explaining what they do. I feel like this is a much richer opportunity. Along with the framework for lesson planning, we wanted to give a strategy, a common strategy, and common language for problem-solving. And we chose Polia's problem-solving process, there are lots of problem-solving processes out there, but I feel like his was kind of the original, and the other ones are just copies of that. So we went back to the original, and gave George Polia credit, and so his four steps, very basic, understand the problem, devise a plan, carry out the plan, answer the question, and look back. Very basic four steps, but definitely relevant for every problem a student might tackle, K through 12. Within that, the first step, understand the problem, is probably where students give up. So, we've added the concept of three reads to that, where students read the problem three different times, they have a different goal each time, and then, in the last time, they actually draw a picture, and they get a visual representation. So, when they go to devise a plan, they have a really good idea of what the problem's about, and then they can go for, and go forth and attack the problem. This is a huge contrast from kind of the old style of problem-solving, I'm not gonna call it the old style, but maybe the style that I learned, and most of you learned, is that you go through, you circle the keywords, you underline the numbers, and then you figure out which type of word problem it is, so that you can fit it into some sort of model that the teacher gave you. It's, that works for a while, but then it stops working, right? I think we all know that.
Here's an example.
And here's an example, so, if you can't see it, there are 295 students in the school, the school buses hold 25 students, how many school buses are needed to fit all the students? And if you can see, the student is just adding the 295 and the 25 to get more buses than there are students, and our budget's not gonna handle that, so.
That's just because they saw the word "all."
Yes. Right. So they just, they just did what they thought they had to do, they boiled this down into a very simplistic problem, they didn't read, they probably don't even know it's about students or buses, so. So in the end, our main objective is to build a community of mathematicians. We want our town to celebrate mathematics and mathematical thinking, we want to talk with our students using the correct vocabulary, and celebrate their, their achievements in And while we're doing this, I feel like without working too hard, if we do all these things, we're going to accomplish the mathematical, the mathematical, common course, common core mathematical practices, that's what I'm looking for. So I feel like we're just gonna accomplish them anyway, without really trying. Students are gonna persevere, they're going to be attentive precision, they're gonna reason abstractly, they're, they're, they're going to do all of these things without even knowing it, and we don't really have to work too hard to make that happen. All right, and lastly, we kind of, we had these ideas to begin with, and then I found this TED Talk by Dan Fickell, and he, he does a really good job of kind of bringing it to light, he's a very charismatic speaker, so if you have the time, I would suggest taking a look at the video, I know that some of us have already seen it. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Mr., Ms. Riley?
It's not really a question, but I just wanna say, like I said last meeting, I already saw the new math in work with my son, he's only in second grade, and when you look at the, what'd you call them, Polys?
Polias.
Polias, yeah. It followed that, like, to the T, and he knows what questions to ask, he drew the picture, and then they answer questions afterwards, like, why is it correct, or why wasn't it correct? I think it's perfect.
They created a rubric as well, to go along with the four, so each of the four steps is being evaluated. So students are getting used to going through all four, which I think is helping tremendously.
Yeah, he loves it, it's definitely made math a little bit easier for him to handle when it comes to problem-solving. So, good job, guys.
Ms. Hernandez?
So I consider myself, and I mean this genuinely, I consider myself extremely fortunate to be on the Curriculum Subcommittee, because I have an opportunity to hear and see some of the hard work that you're doing. And one thing that I really like about this approach to math, and I didn't think of it until actually I was sitting here, was your, you were talking about community, and when we had the opportunity to do some of these things, I was struck by how social it was, and there was connection, it was playful, it was fun, and it was amazing to me that in those couple of minutes, it broke my predetermined identity that I'm not a math person, to be something that was like, I was actually excited about. So I'm really excited to see this, and for our students, and I also wanna commend you, all of these numbers, all these things that we do, everybody that is a part of this team, you're never satisfied, like, you could be happy with a score, but you always wanna do better, and you're always thinking about, how can we improve, what can we tweak, where can we refine, how can we reinforce, so I just, you all work very hard, and I wanna say thank you.
Mr. Neville?
I know, when we start looking at the scores, we start looking at the trends, and the
I know when we start looking at the scores, we start looking at the trends, and trends, we've always been taught, "The trend is your friend." Well, if it's going up, it is, okay? Or, at least going up the way we'd like it to go. What I like especially about this, with the way you teach math to the kids, is you want them to struggle. Struggling is a good thing, because it makes you think. And I think the, the second thing is, is that none of you guys are in the red pen category where it's right or wrong, okay? That last step is to sit down and ask why, okay? And, and get them to think again. And I think just getting that process going, they, you will, I think most kids will just automatically go into that process. If you asked them what they were doing, they couldn't tell you, because it became automatic with them. And I think it's great. And I'm from the old school where we just did flashcards and, you know, I had no idea what the hell we were doing, you know? They gave you a formula, you plug in the numbers, and it worked, you know? And somehow, I graduated high school. But, the, this is talking about as a language, and talking as a culture. And we grew up in the elementary, and we grew up in secondary school. And, actually, it was middle school and then high school. And, there was no, there was no one way to look at math. It was just, it was just different by level. You're giving them a vision, a picture of what it looks like, and it's the same picture from kindergarten to preschool all the way up, that's as far as they want to go with it. That's fabulous. That's just fabulous. I can't thank you enough. And I know, we were embarrassingly supportive of you guys when we presented this at our meeting. I can point out, Mr. Renier, who was just, he felt he couldn't compete with us, because we just wouldn't stop how, how good that presentation was and how much we believed in it. And the only surprise I had tonight is that Mr. Poe was not here trying to solve that problem right away. She was chomping at the bit. She was very restrained. I want to compliment you, actually. He did a great job. And I know you had just started it, going around to the teachers, I think, when we, when we saw it back in the fall. How have the teachers received it? I can guess, but...
The teachers are working really hard, and they're, they're doing a great job with it. They're asking good questions. They're, we're making adjustments as we kind of go through this. I think it's well-received. And it's actually being well-received by the students as well. There's a few, few bumps in the road, but I think we're overcoming them pretty well, and I'm really happy with our turnout so far.
And your assessments along the way are going to kind of assess how we're mastering this as a, as a school district. I would, I would think you're going to start to see some, particularly with, as you see kids from kindergarten going up, you're going to, they'll have it, they'll have had it all of their school career. When you start bringing in 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, great, it's going to be a little bit harder, but I'm looking forward to seeing those results. I think they'll be great. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Poe.
I've already made comments at length about this on multiple occasions, because I'm so pleased with it. But, as I was sitting here, I was just thinking about how, I think it's really going to influence culture beyond math. And I think there are a lot of students who get frustrated, and they say, "Ah, math. Oh, what am I going to do with this math?" And the truth is, maybe 90% of the students won't use the quadratic formula again in their lives, but I think they're always going to use the problem-solving approach. And I think that that's going to transcend the math department. I think that that's going to be valuable in the sciences. I think it can be valuable in really every single discipline that there is. Any point where a student is faced with a problem or a question, and they need to develop an explanation, or a solution, or whatever it is that they're trying to work through, I just think that that process is going to be very pervasive. And I think that it wouldn't be unreasonable to think that we would see gains in other areas as well, as they're applying that in different places. So, it's just another reason why I really like what I'm seeing. And, my child also came home with pages torn from his little book and said, you know, "Oh, Mom, look, look at my math pages that I did." And I was like, "Yeah, right," you know? But, he found them approachable, which was great for an elementary student. So, that was a really nice thing to see.
Mr. Renier.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Data sets have been the main of my existence for the past week, as some people up here have known. And I just wanted to, to say thank you, guys, for coming and bringing the information to us as a board. It's very important that we get this information, obviously. But, what's also important is, is the context of the data sets that you guys have provided to us. Because you're not just providing data sets and saying, "This is where we are, this is where we are, this is where we were." Obviously, you've shown us that we have a deficit in regards to where the state is and where our town is. But, but you've also created that action plan to measure where we need to be and where we need to go from here, which, which is more than admirable. And when people see data sets such as this, and, and people aren't really like, looking at data like, "Oh, 10% off." There's a lot more that goes into just data sets, as you guys know. The way that you read them, the way that you interpret them, there's a lot of factors that go into those data sets as well. So, you can have those upticks from year to year, but there seems to be some consistency with it that you guys have seen to make the changes accordingly. So, I just wanted to thank you, guys, for that, for putting those action plans in place and moving forward, and putting together a, a vision for, for the town that's not just to improve numbers, but to change the way we do things. I think a lot of times when we see numbers that go in downward direction or stay stagnant at something we don't like, we change a lot of little things without really getting the big picture on how we're learning. And I think you, guys, have hit the head, the nail on the head, that we don't need to change the textbooks, we need to kind of change the way that we're learning. And I applaud you, guys, for that, and thank you. And, yeah, you know, Tim's Subcommittee's overtaken mine a little bit, but we're going to get back up on that. But, thank you, guys, so much for coming tonight.
Ms. Riley, one more time.
So, I just have one other question. Around when did you say you were going to roll it out for the parents, the presentation for them? I have to send my husband, because I tried to explain this to him, and he, he, either I couldn't explain it right, which was probably a thing, or I don't know.
On February 13th, I believe it's a Wednesday, we're going to have our first night from 6:30 to 9:30 at Barnard. It's going to be for all K-2, the three buildings.
Perfect. I'm going to send them over.
Kite is trying to help us sponsor the event, so we can also offer childcare. So, Barnard was a good fit for having the services there, so.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Better reserve a front row seat for him.
I'd just like to make a suggestion, too. If you guys wanted to reach out to the PTO liaison, Scott Ryder, he, he coordinates a lot of PTO meetings and utilizes Girl Scouts to help with babysitting. So, if you reach out to him, he might be able to get you some extra hands on deck to help with the sitting. So, I know you're watching, Scott. You're welcome. But, I know, I know he has access to that, so.
Anyone else? Well, you guys said it all, obviously, so I'm going to cut it short so we can, because I see it already starting to fall outside, so we'll let you be. And thank you, thank you for all your work and, and for moving, moving forward and, and all you do.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
And be careful going home. So, why don't we just move to 17 and, no?
Fine by me.
Number 7, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Dreszek.
Well, the first item I'm going to start with was "I Told You So" when it comes to what Mr. Lamesa was going to present. I know some of you on the Curriculum Committee tried to steal my thunder a little bit, but I want to thank, while they're here, I know they got to get out of here, but I want to thank, in particular through, I didn't want to sell short our ELA areas. I see Ms. Gaskell in the back, and it doesn't want to give the impression that we're not doing a tremendous amount of work in that area either, but as the board is aware, that was an area of focus over the last several years. But I just want to caution everyone that this isn't, and everyone articulated, and I think the comments from the board members were kind of subliminally getting to what we were trying to get at. You wouldn't have had this conversation with your own children and seeing the actual, you know, day-to-day interactions, the thing that Jay was explaining, because we didn't look at it globally from a K-12 district. So, you talk about, you know, the definition of insanity, as Rich was sort of alluding to, he's keep looking at it and making little tweaks. It was a complete overhaul. And it really, the work fell on the shoulders of these guys, and we couldn't be happier. But it is new. And I know Mr. Neville mentioned that, you know, Jay's had an opportunity to talk to all the teachers. It was Jay's idea. He approached me and said, "You know, I'm a, I'm a high school person, and, and I want to roll this vision out and get buy-in from all of our elementary folks. I can't do that via email. How, how do I get in front of them?" So, we made him available to go out, and Jay met, I think, and stop me if I'm wrong, any person in the Enfield Public Schools who does any sort of math instruction, Jay has been in front of personally. And that's really the commitment on Jay and Carrie, and obviously under the Michelle's leadership. So, I just wanted to thank you, guys, before we let you go. Now, you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be safe. All our student representatives could not make it this evening, obviously because of the weather and then the changing, that this is actually a special meeting, so they, they weren't able to reschedule. So, we're going to skip the student representatives at this point. The lens through, through the lens of a middle school, the Enfield Public Schools and the Enfield Together Coalition will host a forum on Wednesday, February 13th, at JFK, in the auditorium at 6:00 PM. The forum topic will address issues and concerns of middle-school age students with gaming, anxiety, vaping, and bullying. Parents are urged to attend this forum, and enclosed in your packet is the flyer and the press release with additional information. Also, a list of January and February events is in your packet, in your packets. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, earlier this week, I sent you all an email with a message to our legislators from our friends in Ellington. The Ellington Board of Education made a plea to the legislative body about proposing a change to the current legislation with relieving seniors from 180 school-day calendar, similar to what we'd gone through last year. I did mention in my message to you that, obviously, I would fully support that. I was reached out by Representative Arnoney. Everybody at the state legislature received that, that information. And he asked me my opinion on it, and subsequently agreed to sign on to the bill as well. I did speak with the superintendent in, in Ellington, Dr. Nichols, who I said that I was going to approach the board this evening and see if that was. I've gotten some feedback from some of you, not all of you, give you an opportunity to see it. If that's something that you guys would be interested in showing a letter of support for, I can certainly draft that and have an opportunity for all, for all of you to sign on to, if the board so chooses. But I wanted to use this opportunity tonight.
What's our consensus on it?
Yeah.
We agree. We agree.
Case in point, last year was a perfect example, where we had, you know, kids that had to come back for three extra days of school at the end of the year, and we had to have activities for them because they graduated, they completed, they met all their obligations, but because of the way the calendar falls, they had to come back. So, that would, that would eliminate that going forward. So, I'll draft a, a letter for, for your review, and I'll send it to the chairman, and, and if the board's interested in signing on it, we'll, we'll have him sign on your behalf, or everyone can sign. And that will conclude the Superintendent's Report.
Any other questions for Mr. Dreszek? Audiences? We have none? Board member Cummins? No, we do have an audience, I'm sorry. I apologize. Just state your name for the record.
I didn't sign up, but thank you.
And make sure that mic's on.
Okay. Yeah. I didn't sign up, thank you.
No, no problem.
Okay. I'm Debbie Gaskell, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. There are two topics of interest for me tonight, both ELA, as English 612 Coordinator, and also the debate team. And, I'm here to speak as a fan of the debate team. It has been wonderful to see students take their debate beyond the classroom. I had the opportunity to go to a debate with Mrs. Serrato and the students who spoke here this evening, and it was phenomenal just to see how well that they conducted themselves, their speaking skills, their listening skills, their research that they did ahead of time. It's, it's really phenomenal to see students like that and to have them have that opportunity. And it feeds itself right back into the classroom with writing and speaking and all the skills that we know are very necessary. And I just wanted to just come up here and say thank you to both Mr. Rutledge for really bridging that connection with the Connecticut Debate League. It's been a wonderful experience for me. I know it's been great for the students and for Mrs. Serrato. Because when you start something brand-new, it's really hard to develop the interest. But, we, we do have students who are interested. I know, because I conducted debates in my own classroom, that this is something that students do like to do. It's, there is somewhat of a commitment with the Saturday, and, you know, that, that may perhaps been why we couldn't get this really up and running. It's just been, it's been wonderful to have the opportunity for the students to, you know, get out there, and I really hope that more students will become aware of it and jump on, and I really hope to see the debate team grow. So, I just wanted to let you know my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, now we move on to Board Member Cummins. Who wants to start? Ms., Ms. Hernandez?
All right. A couple of things. We received an email today from the Circle of Security Parenting Series that is being offered by the Enfield Family Resource Center. It is to help to foster communication between parents and children, so they can better understand their child's emotional needs. As we know, behavior is communication. And so, helping our children to communicate clearly, to identify their emotions, really can help address some of the behavioral concerns that you see as children naturally develop. What I really liked was that there are morning sessions, afternoon sessions, and evening sessions. So, this is very accessible for, for parents who are working different schedules. So, anybody who's interested, I'm happy to forward this document to you. Couple of other things. I want to, Superintendent, excuse me, Superintendent Dreszek sent us a really good story about the, some of the struggles that we're having in the state with substitutes and finding qualified substitutes. And so, I want to really publicly say that I fully support having hired and dedicated subs for our building. I think it's critical, especially as we talk about the importance of social connection and community, that we have someone in the building that's able to step in and be a support, especially for all children. And I would encourage that, so I definitely want to say that. But I would also encourage, one of the other things that we were talking about was having more opportunities for play and movement. And I know that those subs could be, a dedicated building sub could be a support, but they're probably going to be busy. So, I want to continue looking at good ways for us to encourage play opportunities in the class. And, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neville?
Sure. I just have one thing I'd like to bring up, and it's a, sort of an item that I bring up regularly, unfortunately, too regularly lately. I'll begin by saying I'm the old guy here. I've been around for, the district for almost 45 years. He wasn't wrong when he said this, you know, earlier. But, the perspective of having spent so much time here, you know, first of all, I love the district, I love the town, and, and I love serving it. But, I, I also know that the school district that we have, we, we didn't get to where we are by accident, okay? And we have to kind of look back to the folks who were here before us and who helped build it here. And, and so, lately, I've been making a lot of comments about people who have left us, okay? And who were, were leaders and, and teachers here in, in the district. And, I, I think it's important to, to highlight the, the commitment and the, the actions and the, the positive nature they had towards our, our, our district and how they made it what it is today. The, the funny thing here is that I'm often, three, three of the last guys I've talked about were part of the Greatest Generation. They were veterans of World War II, okay? As is Joe Lombardo, who I'm going to just say a couple of words about today. They left the war and came back and taught and built this community. And, you know, those of us that know the history of it, know that we were just a, a high school, maybe a junior high at one time in the 50s, and a couple of elementary schools. And they, they built the school the year for 12 years, as this, as this community grew. And now, we're closing schools. So, we've seen a whole change of things going on. But these are the ones who started that whole process and, and came in, and with, through their leadership, we got to the place we were. So, Joe Lombardo was, was here in the 50s and, and 60s, and I think part of the 70s as well. 70s as well. He was a sixth grade teacher. He was a, he was a principal at, at Barnard Elementary School. He spent 19 years in the, in the group. I worked with Joe and my wife worked for Joe in one of her first years teaching here. He, he was a great guy. He was a, he was a graduate of MIT. We, we don't see too many school teachers come out of MIT, but he was one, he was a brilliant guy. Nice guy, good, really good with the kids and just totally committed, as were most of these people that I've spoken about. So I'd like you to keep his memory, keep it, keep him in your prayers. And just remember that, what I said before, that these are the people who helped us get to where we are and we need to honor them for their commitment because we would not be where we are today without them. Thank you.
Very nicely said. Thank you, Mr. Neville. Mr. Renier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, in Mr. Ryder's absence in regards to Hazeville Memorial School, I just wanted to give a couple of updates to their PTO. Little Caesar's Pizza Pickup will be on February 1st, so if anyone ordered pizzas, it'll be on February 1st. February 9th, they're having a special persons dance and that will be at 1:00 PM. And on February 13th, they will have their PTO meeting. So that is for Hazeville Memorial. For my guys over at Eli Whitney, February 1st is their Read-a-Thon for One Book, Three Schools, with a snow date on the 8th, which hopefully there won't be. And then also on the 8th, ironically enough, there's the Snowflake Social, which students can RSVP to. That will be from 6:00 to 7:30. And one last thing I just wanted to bring up because it's kind of been in the news as well. And speaking a lot to, to Tim's point about how great our school district is and our, and our school teachers are, there's been a lot of scuttlebutt in the news as of late in regards to the regionalizations of schools and depending on what report or what bill you read, that the numbers have changed from here or there. I know I fully support, and I don't want to speak out of term, I'm pretty sure that the nine people on this board fully support towns and the ownership of their school district. I, I for one would, would go fighting to allow any regionalization as it comes to Enfield. We have built such a strong school district here in the town that meets so many different needs for so many different individual students. We have high scholars, we have great athletes, we have great students all around, no matter the grade level. And we know, Enfield, we know what our students need. So if you're watching, you know, just, just make that phone call to your state rep, to your, to senators, to the governor, whoever it may be, and just let them know. Because my fear is that even if they, they start off slow or small, there's a broader, bigger picture here and, and I'm not in favor of that. Again, Enfield knows what Enfield needs. We have a unique student set and it would be sad to have to cha, make any changes to that. So that's all I have, just, you know, I support Enfield Public Schools, I support the education here in town, I support our teachers, and I just want to make sure that the state leaves us alone because we, we know how to deal with our own kids. We love them and we know what's best. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. Hopefully we're far enough away that they will leave us alone. Mr. Poe?
I don't have a lot in the way of comments tonight, but Enfield Street School's Special Someone Dance is the 8th. They have a limited number of tickets available for that because of fire code reasons, so there's only 22 left. So any families who still want to go, you definitely want to kind of jump on that and get your ticket purchased. The next Enfield Street School PTO meeting is on Wednesday, the 13th. Co-signing a lot of what Rich and Tim have said and 100% co-signing everything that Sarah has said this evening, so in the interest of time and a snowstorm, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. Ms. Riley?
Okay, so I wanted to remind everybody tomorrow's a half day. And Friday, this Friday, is National Read Aloud Day. So take a book and sit down with your kids after school and read aloud to them. It helps out with their verbal skills and learning how to read as well. Along with reading, I wanted to say that First Readers' Our Trivia Night is February 23rd at 7:00. Doors open at 6:30. We have a lot of people signed up and people are donating for us, so we're really excited. It's going to be a good night. Our next meeting, since we're always looking for volunteers, is February 11th. For Henry Barnard PTO, they have a game night, a family game night this Thursday night. And February 12th is their next PTO meeting. And then I went to something, so it's in my Cracked Council, I got invited to go to the Cave Crack Legislative Breakfast last week. So I do have a copy of that Ellington Public School letter that they wrote for the graduation thing. So if any of you guys want to look at it, read it, I have it. So that was cool. And then they talked about a couple of things and I just wanted to jump around really quick. And you guys can feel free to look at all these handouts when you get a chance, if you want to. But something that was slightly alarming was that if the state doesn't fund Crack that, the way that they are supposed to, they are projecting that they're going to increase our costs to the school districts, to the school districts for 16 and 1/2% for 2020, then 20.4% in '21, and then 22.9% in '22. So basically, instead of paying $1,671,753, which is what we paid in 2018, by fiscal year '22, we'll be paying $2,54,584 for Crack, just to put it in perspective. So that's kind of alarming. So hopefully they decide to fund them a little bit better because they haven't increased their funding since 2010 or '11. So that's one thing that they're fighting. And then another thing they talked about were their, was their legislative agenda. They, looks like they support regionalization. They want to support placing the burden of proof in special education due process hearings on the party challenging the placement. But they also want a formula for special education cost sharing to offer predictable reimbursement, so that's good. There's more on here. And then something else that they were talking about that I need more information on and maybe Mr. Dreszek can point me in the right direction at some point in time. There's a new finance model that's proposed by this place called the Special Education Predictable Cost Collaborative. And I didn't understand the whole thing, but it sounds like they want districts to estimate their special ed costs and then they're going to put all the money in like a pool and then you would pay from that pool, which is kind of alarming. And a lot of other people that were there were very alarmed by that. But then Cave, they're on the right track. Their legislative priorities, there's a bunch of them, but a couple is to avoid the transfer of state obligations to local property taxpayers, so that's great. And they want to help remove mandates that fail to promote student achievement. So I'm all on board with a lot of their priorities here. There was also a pamphlet in there unfortunately about the R E S C Alliance, which is the Connecticut Alliance of Regional Educational Service Centers, which talks about regionalization. So if you guys want to read into that, there's that. And then for the legislative session, I thought I would let you guys know, if anybody wants to go to their education public hearing, it is going to be on March 11th, where they're going to talk about all their bills and stuff. And I've, then they put together the proposed education bill list and it was good to see our representatives on some of those bills. Representative Arnone, his name is on a bill to ensure that students in the state receive high quality skills training, to ensure that students in the state receive high quality skills training in order to achieve well-paying careers in the state. So I thought that was great. And then Carol Hall is on an Act Concerning the Full Funding of the Special Education Cost Sharing Grant, to fully fund it. She's also on one, reimbursement to school districts for former magnet student, school students who enroll in a public school after October 1st, to provide reimbursement on a prorated basis to the school district. So that was good. And then the last one she's on is concerning participation in intrascholastic athletics by homeschooled students, to provide equal access to intrascholastic athletics for students who are homeschooled. So those are the ones that our reps are on. And that's what happened there. So if you guys want to look at any of these, you can go for it.
Quite an information. I don't know what anybody else would want to.
Too, but I'd be, especially since you went through some of those that, that piqued my curiosity. Could, could it be possible to get Kathy to, to run those off if anybody else, well, I'd like to see all of them myself.
Yeah.
And you can, you can just email them to, you can.
My, Vice Chairman Riley, I-
Mr. Dreszek is-
I'm sorry. I can, I, I do get a legislative update, seems, it seems hourly these days, from, from CAPS and from Cave. Some of things, Mr. Renier is correct and, and there is a, a conversation happening statewide with regards to regionalization. There's also a conversation happening statewide about regionalization of services. So sometimes people get lost in the, we're all going to consolidate and be one district or are we going to go down the path of regionalizing certain services for other districts? So that com, both of those conversations are happening. I can tell you that Cave and CAPS obviously oppose the idea of stripping local control and giving it to a regionalized board, which I can hear by, by the members of the board here today, that that would be something you would strongly oppose, as, as all of us would. But with regards to, I'm not, I'm not 100% certain on the special, on the, on the origin of the new special and funding mechanism, usually those have, those exist in sort of like a think tank and then they send that formula out. But the excess cost grant, just as a reminder, that is actually done in a pool format. I mean, the state funds one pile of money. So every year we talk about, we don't know what our reimbursement for excess cost is going to be. Like for instance, this year we're budgeted at 70%. Years it's been 80, sometimes it's gone, gone higher or lower. The reason we don't get an actual figure on that is because it's based upon how many districts actually have children that qualify for that four and a half times per pupil expenditure. And once the state gets all that money or gets all that information from the sending districts, then they make the allocation of, well, we can only fund it at 70 this year because the pool of money doesn't change. It's how many people have, are eligible for reimbursement through that pool of money. So not knowing the origins of, of the latest formula, it sounds as if it's the same, again, I referenced what I said earlier of-
It was confusing.
...definition of insanity. But it sounds as if they're, they're repackaging something that's very similar.
Yeah.
But I, I can certainly send all the legislative updates to the board. I'll try to consolidate it on a weekly basis because it does change dramatically by the hour.
Yeah.
Mr. Neville?
If we just ask a question here, I, I believe you had said earlier that, or at one of the meetings we've been at, that you invited the representatives to come in. You were going to have them come in, you actually, you actually invited the governor as well, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I didn't yet, I wanted him to get his-
No, you're going to, this is, I mean, one of those things, or two of those things you mentioned were things that we brought up at this table, if not last year, the year before. And I'm glad that our representatives picked up on those and, and put bills together. I would love, if we started talking about the, the Crack stuff, which I, I would love to have us have a real healthy conversation about passing that on to us. I wish we could get away with that. You know, just, you know, Mr. Dreszek, you could pass it on to the state or whatever.
Yeah.
But I just, you know, I, I don't mean to be like this, but that is, that is like a blow in the head to me that they would try to do that. And, and we have no say in it at all. And that's just scary to me. So what I'd like to do is see if we could get them here and we could pose those questions or even send those questions down to them to come back here and be prepared to respond to those. I don't know, the rest of you-
I know, I know at the last council meeting that they asked for the representatives to come, so, and I know their time is limited also because of the legislature, but maybe it's something we could look, look at after they meet with the council or, or we forward them questions and they can maybe answer it to come some-
I think, or here, they've, they've been very gracious before coming here. But we need to do it before the budget gets too fur down the road here.
Yeah.
So I don't know how far, I don't know how far our town manager got with an invitation to them, so.
I can touch base with, I'm going to talk to Mr. Bronson tomorrow. But I can also, Kathy reaches out to the offices of all our reps and, and starts consolidating dates that they may be available to come, so we can, we can double check on that.
And if anybody has questions, we can forward them, maybe forward them through Kathy and she can forward them off to them. So I'm good?
Thank you.
We good?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So my comments are going to be short and sweet. Crandall has a winter instrumental concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM. And that's it for me. Because I didn't, I didn't hear anything from other meetings that I need to address, so we'll leave it at that. Number 10, unfinished business, we have none. Number 11, BOE, 11A, BOE Policy Revision, number 6146, Requirements of Graduation for its Reading. Does this go to Mr. Renier or Mr.-
I will defer this to Mr. Longy.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. The Curriculum Committee can probably help with this as well. So if you know, if you remember, the Policy Committee's been trudging through the 4,000 series, but we had to take a little sidetrack to quickly get an initial approval to get to you in the 6,000 series. Hopefully I had a chance to look at the policy 6146. The state has finally made up its mind about the new graduation requirements. The reason why this was all so last minute, normally we'd have time by the end of the year to get this to you, but our curriculum department needs to get the program of studies together for the high school. So we're looking for a first reading approval on this and the next board meeting get a second reading approval so this can get into the program of studies for our high school students. But if you read through it, and I'm sure the Curriculum Committee can also give more details if you need them, but basically the incoming eighth graders, the incoming eighth graders, there's a, an adjustment to the total number of credits you have to now have in the state of Connecticut to graduate, which is now 25 credits. The other big change is there has to be a world language credit, which is a requirement, and some other changes within there. And also the Curriculum Committee, as well as the Curriculum Department, is going to increase the requirement for the SAT for graduation to 480, as we're slowly raising the bar on that. And that's just pretty consistent with the other districts.
Do we want to move this along and do a first and second reading so they, just to spare them the two weeks of waiting and, do we have any objection to that? Can we do that?
We can. We can do it.
I, I think it'd be good for them because they've got so much on their plate.
So I need a motion to change the motion to a first and second reading. Moved by Mr. Poe, seconded by Mr. Neville. And that's by hand vote that we're changing, we're mending the, the motion. So that's all in favor. So now we're going to do it as a first and second reading to get this done and over and-
There's a question here.
Oh, question by Ms. Hernandez.
Just one really quick. As I was reading over this line, 165 and also 1, just one. Oh, you know what? Never mind. I misspelled it.
PSAT?
Sorry. That is my fault.
Okay.
My eyes are cramping.
It's numbers, it's numbers. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms.?
Actually, that's not a bad point to bring up for line 162 and 165. Because didn't they just say that? Oh, that's a benchmark.
There was a benchmark, yes.
So, okay, never mind.
Yes, this was brought up at the last curriculum meeting.
Okay, all right.
And there, and there, and I know we, I don't want to speak for curriculum, but, but we did go over, we did correct some few things that were, and I see they fixed them, so.
We, we made a ton of corrections that were, most of them were updates, okay? Some were just needed, the language had to be clarified because it hadn't been clarified in several years.
Yeah, because they still had like two, Class of 2011, I think, in one quarter.
It was a, it was a major update. Substantively, I think, Mr. Longy laid out the two big things. One is the foreign language require, the world language requirement and the increase in credits. I'm a skeptic because they've been talking about boosting these credit scores up, graduation requirements up, and they keep putting it off and putting it off. And so I know they're saying it, I think they put off the last one for four years in a row or some, something close to that, maybe even five. I also think there's a huge issue with the world language requirement, and I, I think I brought it up at the last meeting. World language teachers just aren't out there to do what they want to do. And to do that, there's certain, they just don't have that many certified people. And if you're going to do this, you need some real lead time in order to build up that cadre of, of language teachers. And, and then figure how you're going to schedule it as well. And so, you know, it's not a little thing or inconsequential thing. And, and I think that, it's a, it's a financial thing. And, and I think it's something we'd have to look at if we're going to do it. But I, I think it's good that we're getting out of the way now, but we also have to put out there the issues to actually accomplishing this. And I believe, Andy, we're ahead of the game in terms of most districts because we, we had been thinking about these things early on and we, we've talked about them the last couple of years.
Right. Even, even when, you know, the, the previous board and the administration designed the new schedule-
Right.
-eliminating study halls, going to an eight period over two days, that was all in preparation for 25 credits. The traditional seven period day with study halls never would have made it. Never, I mean, we're, Enfield is in, is in great shape to meet this, but Tim is right, the world language is going to be some difficulties, but we'll get through it. We'll, we'll figure it out. We always do.
I'm not faulting the requirement, I'm just, to practically get it done is going to be expensive and, and time consuming. So it just needs to be a consideration. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Depoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Chairman Cruzell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 11B, action if any regarding fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. So I want a motion to accept or to approve the superintendent's budget presented at our last meeting.
Some move. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Miss Riley. Any discussion on the budget?
Mr. Dreszek, I was listening on the phone when this was presented, so I may not have gotten it right. I, I think you asked us if we had any things to send them to you. Have you received any, you or Mr. Longi, any questions about the budget from any of us?
No.
I, I, okay. I was asked by Ms. LeBlanc to, because I told her this may be coming up today, and she asked me to tell you guys that, although she can't vote on it, she's enthusiastically in favor of it. Just wanted you to know that.
Any other concerns? I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. We're asking for the bare minimums, and, you know, just like we did last year, pretty much, and just to keep our shining.
Right. And we still don't even have all the numbers that you need.
And, you know, like, I reiterate it every time, it's backwards. It's a blank, backwards process. I'll leave it at that. You fill in the blank.
We're still gonna have our meetings with the council, correct, on a regular basis?
That's by town, that's by charter.
Yes.
No, we used to do just one. We've met more often with the council, I think, in discussing these things. You've brought them up to date on different things as the year's going on, because there's numbers you don't even know about.
As, as, as the budget season progresses.
We're gonna have a joint meeting with the council to present it to them.
Tom Anderson and I have had discussions about when it's, he hasn't completed his budget yet, so we're gonna give him a little space. But once they do, we'll, we'll start scheduling joint meetings so that you can have a dialogue with the council.
I say, just like we did last year, we moved it ahead sooner than later, so they can start, and then we'll fill in, we'll fill it as we go.
I think the meetings are critically important for us to establish that dialogue. And I think my conversations with them, they, they liked it as well, because we're not sitting here giving you, it's not an event. We're not throwing it to you and then guessing how much we're gonna get. We're sitting there and giving you real data. This is what it's gonna cost us. This is what we need to run the school. And, and I think that kind of a dialogue is critical, and I, I believe it's probably one of the best things we did last year, to establish that level of dialogue. So, thank you.
And like bringing back about the special education, I mean, we're always shodding at it, and it's, and it's a shame. You know, it's K through 12 is by, by state constitution, it should be funded by the state, and they keep going after higher education, so. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Roll call, please.
Okay. I'll do it tomorrow. Sorry. Yes. Roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Depau?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Chairman Cruzel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. So we're at number 12, Board Committee Comments, our reports, curriculum.
I have all this paperwork for you. We spent two hours and 18 minutes, I believe, at our last meeting. The greater part of it's already been tied into one of the things that we just passed, the policy on the graduation requirements, and a great deal of discussion, at least over half of it, went in on that, and talking about some changes that we make. I think, I couldn't do it justice by just giving just a couple of comments on it, and probably shouldn't just leave it to a couple of comments anyway. I think the most important thing we do here, in my opinion, is talk about curriculum and assessment. Okay? That's kind of our purpose for being. And so, with your permission, or maybe even without it, I'm going to add to my comments as we go on, not necessarily tonight, but I'm gonna ask Sarah, she'll pass this out. I've got the agenda and the minutes, which are extensive, and I, I'm an old guy, read paper, okay? I like a newspaper.
Save it down, Sarah, that's fine.
Just pass it down.
Okay. We also have been asking, and, you know, and Sarah and Ashley know this, we've been asking, we've been talking about assessment, and the level of assessments, and when do we take, when do they take place, and where do they take place, what levels they take place? So we asked the curriculum folks to put together one. So we have an elementary kindergarten through grade five, a packet, and it's by grade, I staple them together. And this is some I keep, because you won't see it all if you, if you get it as an email. And the next one is the grade six through high school, okay? I think some of the assessments you probably haven't even heard of, okay? If you have questions about them, feel free to call us, or call, call the curriculum folks, and Michelle will be happy to go through it with you. I think when we start talking about assessments in general, and we want to talk about it specifically as we, as we go through the next few months, is what the purpose of them are. A lot of these assessments, you're not gonna see recorded places, the data's gonna go back to the teachers. And the purpose of that kind of assessment is that it's going to help them address their, their teaching of the kids and how the kids are learning. It's a direct response to what they've taught, the standards they've taught, how well the kids are doing, and what they can do to improve it and help the kids master standards. So I think maybe we could have them back at some point to kind of go through in some detail these assessments, so that we all have an understanding of them. But I would guess that you have parents that talk to you about these things and say, well, what does this mean, and stuff like that, and there certainly are a lot of them. I, I think it's important for us to stay as current as we can, so this is a first step. And to take a look at it, if you have a question, please call. If you have a question about any of the other things that are in the, the two pages of minutes, please call us. I like to think that the meetings are exciting, okay? And they have been lately, and they're, and we have a good time with them, too. I mean, I think we're lucky, if you, you know, listen to these folks talk, they're enthused about what they do, and what better people could you have dealing with, you know, the developing curriculum and assessments for our kids? So unless you have some questions for any of us, and Walter dropped in our meeting that night as well, along with Sarah, and, and.
And I have your packet, by the way.
Yeah. We'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you for giving us these.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I, I like paper. I know it makes me old, but I like paper.
I like information.
Anyway, thank you very much. I got a packet for.
All right, so.
Give a packet for Rutledge.
I got, I got one for, for Chris Rutledge, yes.
Thank you.
D Finance?
We met yesterday. Everything is looking good, on track, in our budget so far, and our next meeting is on February 11.
C Policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy last met last Tuesday, and for those who haven't made it out to a policy meeting, it is fantastic. I invite everyone out to them. Never know what you're gonna get. But what I do know what you're getting.
It was Wednesday.
It's a competition.
I don't even know. No competition, we're better. No, equally as good. So what you guys have in front of you, Kathy had prepared for you all, is the 5144.1 series that we approved last meeting, physical restraint, seclusion, so that is ready for your binders. And also is the 3,000 series that the committee had done, both reviewed by CAE, and both are now official, so please add those to your three-ring binders as well. Our next policy meeting is February 20. We plan on tackling the 4,000 series and anything from the floor, and that's it.
Thank you. D Leadership, we met last Wednesday, last.
Wednesday.
Yeah, last Wednesday. So you met two Wednesdays ago, or whatever. And Joint Facilities, we're meeting on the 7th.
Yes.
We're not meeting this.
People could make this week.
Yeah, we're not meeting this week. And it's just not much.
Just as a point of information, we've been working, sorry. We've been working with the, the council to try to get the architects to plan out the roofs that we have to do this year, that we want to do. It's actually more than what we have to do. And I, I talked to Donna today, and she said all the roofs are, are going to be, you know, the architect's assessment's gonna be done. They've worked that out.
Yep.
The next thing we've been trying to work with them on is getting the money, promise of the money set aside that allows us to apply early, so we don't get into the Thanksgiving roofing in the rain fiasco that we had this year. And so, that's, that's a big deal, and they're working up the numbers now. In fact, she was working it up as we both spoke to it today. And that's gonna go to the, to the council, I believe, in a week or so.
Yep. That's what I heard, too.
So, keep your fingers crossed. We need that. If not, this'll be the slowest roofing process ever, and it'll take 20 years. It's crazy. We have to, we have to change the way we're looking at this stuff. And I think the council has been working very, very hard, and the committee's been working very hard, and we've, we've met some, some of the hurdles, we just have a couple more to go, so, just so you know that that's working. And if we, if we get through what we're trying to get through, we could start as soon as school is out. Now, we'd be ready to go, contracts will be hired, materials will be there, and they'll be able to start and get it done. So, that's where we're at.
FJFK, we, the last Thursday's meeting was canceled, and we're gonna, I think they're meeting this Thursday, and I know the RFP, I think, is close to going out for the architect, so.
Yeah.
They're rolling it out. I'm going to add a, we're gonna add a, we're gonna change G to our new Joint Security Committee with the council, and the liaisons will be Mr. Renier, Mr. Rutledge, and Mr. Ryder, all the three Rs. We'll call you guys the three Rs.
AKA your policy unit.
Oh, yes, that's right. They are.
I just, there's a question for that. Have they, I, Scott had contacted me and wanted to know, have they decided when they're meeting?
I was told it could be either Wednesday or Friday mornings, and it's gonna be, they're gonna be quarterly meetings.
They're gonna be quarterly meetings?
Quarterly meetings.
First meeting's gonna be February 6.
Oh, good.
Oh, you already found out?
Yeah, we, we got our invitations today.
Oh, okay. There we go. February 6.
Now I can answer for them. Thank you.
So, we're at number 13, Approval of Minutes, Regular BOE Meeting Minutes, January 8, 2019.